Hi Jade, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, thanks. That one is not right.
I have to process.
Yeah. That was long. Take a minute.
So it's all right?
Yeah, when I noticed it at our meeting, it was too late and there was people here and all that.
Is the battery operated on here?
Yeah.
I'll just go back. New battery in it though.
We'll see if it keeps us behind.
We'll start. Steve is asked to be skewed. I haven't heard Joe, so he's at the unless it shows up. All meeting tour, first order of business is consideration of the minutes of March twenty six, twenty five. Couple changes for those. I answer, so. Line one ninety four, one ninety five. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I had number two, it says the board requested a timeframe for the professional test. So estimated it would take until June or July, the deadline was set for July first. In accordance with, I would like to add, in accordance with the legal agreement, that's why we made it July first.
Can we say in alignment with?
Okay.
Alignment, according, yeah, fine with me.
Hey, hold on. So is that what is called a legal agreement?
What's that?
Is that what is called a legal agreement?
Yeah.
With settlement?
Court order or what?
That's what I was wanting to do with their official name.
Technically, it's called a settlement agreement and mutual release.
Okay, so, yeah, in accordance with it.
Settlement agreement and mutual release.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then on one ninety nine. I had final decision for Joe was for Joe to move and trailer by July first. They've written agreement signed by. Joe and Paul. Joe Sharp, Paul Bootner's chair at the recommendation, I think you made that recommendation, right? Yeah.
You want to say recommended by or just the two of them?
Yeah, you said, right, yeah, because we're second member and that's why I'd be. Um, then I have on page. Page eight, line three thirteen. Third, some additions were intended to ensure applicants review the sections on looping. And I would like to conclude, and the town water regulations. Somewhere in there, and then administration as well as coordination of public works. And the town engineers. Engineers plural because we have two now. Uh, but I want to get to town water regulations in there because that was the whole purpose, to make sure that they review the town water regulations. And then three forty seven. Mine. It was noted that town has signed an agreement who wasn't came to serve as instead of second town engineer, one of two engineers. The minute George showed up. He's here. And that's all it.
Yeah, line three oh eight. In parentheses. That should say general use down down. I believe, or is that the name of that new zone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, generally.
Generally, so the first part is second part is two of them.
That one in quotes should say general use down.
Like for books, one beginning of. Realizes. That's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Instead of the previous, it's going to be the three should come out. But just plain G. You know, G and three.
Is it general use three or general use root three?
But we call, I mean, the short, G and three. General use root three. So we put that instead?
Well, let's put general use root three and then parentheses for GU three.
Mike, you have any changes?
No.
Joe, do you have any changes for the minutes? Okay. Okay, okay, made an adjustment. All of the favor, I oppose the exceptions. Do you want to stay in this job? On the minutes? Joe stays. Uh, discussion on the master plan. Gerald gave. Hey, everybody, you talk with all of you and I. So I looked at, I might ask Harold to take the one from those originally. And it looked like it was more in line with. What we had. And I asked her to revise it. A lot of, I marked up coffee.
Yeah, she sent up.
Right, she sent up a copy of that, right, and then I marked it up before I got it. So. I'd like to get any comments, anyone has on this, so we can get it out. Start getting some. Our piece. For. I guess. By page. The first page, see my, oh, first page. First page is the one with the middle mark, page one.
We pretty much need to.
Right? Page three. Page four, I had a couple of, wanted to comment on page four.
Okay, on the sort of services, the stuff that highlighted in yellow is just thoughts I was throwing out there. Okay, do you want to do this and not do this, or here's an idea. Keep six all or?
On page four. However, there is, it says no low cost housing. I don't think we have very many, but there must be some low cost houses because people are using that. Right, I mean, we have. We have some, we just don't have.
Well, Jane is putting people up at hotels.
Wait, but that doesn't mean it's not.
Right.
But can we say there was a lack of?
That's fine, I'm all right with that. I just wrote not very much, but can you say the lack of, yeah? Is it a lack of or insufficient?
Insufficient would be the same thing. I'm really, insufficient is a.
That's even better. Well, that means we have some, but just not, right? I like insufficient.
I like it.
Well, lack, lack to me sounds like we don't have. So there's insufficient, low cost housing, and then the next. The cost of housing is astronomical, says that astronomical, can we say out of reach? Due to competition, something that's astronomical, just. I'm always say this, out of reach due to competition.
I like that.
Uh, and then. It starts talking about. The past few years, the number of full time service workers have been living in tents in the force of the past ninety three town with stocks all the way facility. And their cars by town hall, right?
You can take it out, but it's true.
Well, I'm saying, but I think we need to do that in the RFP.
Okay.
I think we can tell that we, you know, I mean, it just seems kind of.
So where do you want me to start crossing?
Just take out from in the past few years. I just don't think it's appropriate. The people that are having a hard time just bring it up like that. I mean, we, we can say that there are people, we start talking to them. But I just. Well, someone else discreet. Anyone else on page three?
I thought it was page four.
Page four, yeah, look at page four, there we are.
When that was page.
I thought that was page. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, so what I did was.
Page five.
This is what we have in our, the ones that don't have yellow, those are the chapters that are now. And the only thing that we didn't have is an executive summary. So. Some of the, a lot of the master plans I look at have an executive summary and that's helpful. I think it's helpful, but.
So. The executive summary, what were you saying that like?
Well, as part of the introduction, like here's the brief introduction in the front of the executive summary. It's like the reader's digest version.
It's typical for a report like this to include an executive summary. That basically summarizes an eighty page report in two pages or one page. Just kind of to point out the, the conclusions, not the data, not the discussions, not all the input sessions. But some of the conclusions, you know, highlights them. Then if you look at one of the conclusions, say, that's crazy. Then you can go into that chapter and rewatch, you know? I mean, I could go either way, but I get it.
So you want to include the first. Bullet points that don't have yellow, and then you want to also put in the yellow ones that I'm saying?
Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas.
No, 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 that's where we're from, so.
So one of the, you know, one of the comments that has been made to us in here. Some people who are looking to invest. Up here on Riverwalk and some other. They came in and they kind of grilled us on, you know. Where's your work, where, where are your workers coming from? You know, what's the housing life of workers and? And then he said that he had investments in Colorado and other ski areas. And then, and then they just said, if you don't have what it takes, this is going to be a dead town. And so we're not going to just here. I mean, that's just like two people, so. So what I'm just thinking is that you have conversations as part of your master plan process, so. You know, how can we sustain what we're, what we're building? If we.
Without a horrible housing.
Or maybe, you know, without doing support to affordable housing. Next town over or, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, I think.
I think the conversation would be good and, and including something in the master plan. I mean, not that we have to solve the whole problem, but to discuss and, and maybe. Summarize it and, and talk about possible teacher options.
And that would just, you know, we would put it under the population of housing. But it would be sort of a sub.
Yeah.
You could also put it under business, I mean. There's, there's a way, there are ways that, that you can incentivize businesses to put in. Employee housing through. Extra density, extra height, extra whatever.
Well, and like Kamalish Patel with his hotel here. You know, he, remember he has the five hundred units and that's what's going to be his employee housing. As part of his, I mean, that was his plan all along. He's like. He's like, I know, but I'm not going to be able to get employees here. And I'm going to have to, in order to keep this business going, I'm going to have that housing. So I'm just as part of the plan, I'm just going to create house. As part of my hotel operation.
Create more development, let's see it that way.
Well, anyway, so I'm just saying.
Also that, to that, the ordinance doesn't have incentives for that, right?
I suppose somebody, somebody can store it every time, nobody wants to listen to it.
So you agree that we could put it as a discussion point in the master plan?
We can just discuss it and then hurt it.
I would agree with that, Mike. Yeah, sustainability of first economy without affordable workforce housing. So I think.
OSP, when you give us the whole rundown, what can be done to the. Who's probably longer. And if you remember, same reason.
I think. I, I think that the next one, the community design. Kind of. Minutes that sustainability part of it or goes along with it.
I agree, I think if, if a discussion on tiny houses should be. Part of the tourist economy without affordable workforce housing options. Just put that up into that.
I, I, I think I'll combine, combine that, those two bullet points somehow to make it.
Well, maybe as some bullets under the housing and neighborhoods or. Population.
Sustainability of tourist economy without affordable workforce housing options. In.
Economic development.
And then, and then how about a second?
And, and, and the way that community design is taken into consideration. Because community design is, is how, how you want to put what where, right? And what part time you might want to put. Tiny house, so what part time you might want to have a trail park, all part time.
Right now, we allow the trail parks, pretty much like we were. Except for the small business. So we've already made that change.
You were.
This is just for discussion purposes.
Right.
Titles of.
That's right.
We can make one bullet that says. How it's sustainability. But then put down two dashes, one that says a tourist economy and one that says tiny house communities. We'll just have that discussion.
That would be funny. Conservation. Uh, that says none, might want to consider a variation of the open space requirements and subdivision regulations.
I think that discussion is good. I don't know, again, if I would call it conservation. Because we're not, we're not. I mean, in my mind. I, I guess there's two types of open space. One is when a developer goes in and wants to do something, has, has to have open space. The other would be if, if the town wanted to set aside land for open space. I would put the open space requirements. In subdivision regulations under housing and neighborhoods. And maybe begin, want to talk about what is the current open space requirements and do we want to change those?
Lincoln's pretty unique, we've got about ninety five percent of the state of our towns on you.
Conservation, right.
It's already open space.
It's already, right, it's already conservation.
So.
Conservation, so I'm not sure I would put. Maybe just identification of conservation areas. Currently within the town and those that might be considered, just so it's a, it's a generalistic. Do we want to consider anything else, more green space, more whatever, but it just leads to a discussion. And. I mean, it's, this is basically for the, for the planning board to talk to them too, but it's also for all of the. Public outreach, so that they can, it, it, you know, we're not going to tell them what, we don't want to tell them what they, what they want to say, we want to listen to what they want to say, so just. Bring up the, bring up the bullet points and say, does anyone have any thoughts on this?
But I think this, I, I agree, ninety five percent of the town is already open space. We can't do anything about it, it's, it's either state owned or federal.
We, we get about ninety seven percent of the town is on the state or federal government.
Oh, I think what, what has come up with this board many times is a discussion of. And maybe we call it green space. But. Would we want to have a variation on the green space requirements in either subdivision regulations or site plan review? I, I bet it, you know, half a dozen times this year, we looked at, at applications and someone has said, I wish you would. Include more green space, instead of wishing it, do we want to? Have incentives to provide more green space? I think that would be the more productive discussion.
You know, do something like Moon Mountain did, first pattern. Give a tenant all home, let's put a second payment for employees.
Yeah, well, yeah, this is, this is the old job, just with conservation areas.
Yeah, I know. Can we put on a discussion on green space and open space requirements? In the subdivision, in subdivision regulations and site plan requirements? And put that under. On housing and neighborhoods. As a discussion point under housing neighborhoods.
Well, there's more on any plan, you said, when you're looking for green spaces and open spaces, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Why, why don't we put it on the land use? All right, and then. There was historic preservation, none? Might consider you.
Yeah, we don't have any. And when. I think which project we were looking at, I think it's in.
The Longhorn.
The Longhorn, that's when I learned that the state had already. Done some kind of evaluation on Route Three. And it gone all the way down to Woodstock and. They had already determined that. You know, if. The communities wanted to, but they already were qualified for. Uh, historic district designation, now, I don't know all the ins and outs of that, I don't know if that's like a. It's like a sand trap, you know?
I think you could put that, I think you could put that historic preservation. And with the natural and cultural resources. And just put another, I mean, maybe just three areas of natural and cultural resources and historic. Preservation opportunities or property, something there. So it just gives you three things to look at, do we need more, do we want more, do you, you know? We want to identify more because. To me, for me, the historic preservation would be trying to maintain. Either properties or land that lends itself to keeping Lincoln's identity. You know, that's, that's why.
Yeah, the people who bought the Longhorn, that people say are thinking, you know, they're going to retire up here, but they're still a little younger. So that's what they were thinking, that it was so cool to move through because of this. Of nineteen fifty over there. And they were, and they were very attached to the Longhorn.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't have tax law, but you, you have the, the history depends on how old you are. Right? I mean, you know, I mean, what, when, when Joe grew up, grew up, nobody dick was a minnow and I mean, most of the stuff was mill yards and there were. There, there was all sorts of stuff here that's where you go to script at the time. I mean, yeah, I mean, so a lot of things have changed, so it really is age oriented, but. People who are, you know, okay, you, I don't know how old you are, but you're, you're younger than Joe, so.
I stayed with you once.
Okay. So I know, I know, I know, but I mean, I'm just saying, it's, you know, so you, you're looking at history as tough, one person says different than jokes. But, you know, may, maybe the people. That were going to come to some of these public forums that have, they would like to save more, I don't know, but it definitely.
What that, what the woman on the state said is, you know. Other communities have enhanced their cultural resource, you know, their historic resources and, you know, it's been. Helpful for them business wise, so.
So I think we, do, do you agree we can put it in with natural and cultural resources and historic preservation areas?
I like that.
And, and that way there, like I said, it's just to identify.
Discussion.
Discussion, to start a discussion.
Okay, and then, and then the Duncanham had a, they called it master plan steering.
Yeah, I don't think we need that. I don't think we need that. Anyone else think different? I think the planning board can be the best plan steering committee.
I, I, I want to go back to the historic thing just for a second, because I'm thinking about stuff. Usually when that happens, there's a lot of rules regulations to this, isn't there?
A lot of it.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if we should look at what we're going to be jumping into first.
But you need to identify, I would think you would want to identify. If you want to identify any of those areas, and, and then if people. If you want to identify any of those areas, and 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 then if people say, yeah, you know, we really should start thinking about that, then you look at setting up a historical. Uh we call it.
Commission.
Commission, and they then. Are 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 the keepers of all of that stuff.
But I think it's up to the individual property owners, like this happened when I worked in line and then they designated a lime center in the. Historic district. And it was basically, it didn't have any effect at all when one. And then they do a landlord, they want to take advantage of whatever opportunities there were for somebody that has sort of property and wanted to. Renovate it, there were some tax incentives and that sort of thing that they could take advantage of, but. Just because it was one of the designated um historic spots, then this is the hand. It's up to the property owner to decide whether that's something they want to tax, it's not necessarily. It was years ago.
Right, but I I think there's two levels to that, the the state designation and the tall uh historic. Districts. Give some leeway, but I think that that individual towns can take that much further as far as restrictions, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Who regulated what colors you can cannot paint houses in the in the historic district. And um.
Everything from what you can change, add, you couldn't change windows and stuff like that, there's a lot.
Or you gotta be specific things, everything was.
But I mean, I I mean, that that's, again, that's a topic that.
Oh, okay. Sure that I have.
I don't know, but I think the, I mean, you're gonna have to tell them, how far ask, how far do you wanna go, if you wanna establish a historic. And cultural commission to to take a look at this, and if they say, oh, no, 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 we'd just like to. Maintain something, then then that goes into maybe the town ordinance, you might be able to just put another section and. The uh plan is plan art says that's a historic area, you would have.
Right.
Seasons to deal with that.
Being being the planning board with the land use, who were gonna go into people wanted it. We definitely would have to look at it, because again, I know there are a lot of restrictions, there are a lot of stuff going on. And you might shoot yourself in the foot, kind of, you know, depending on what's going on, that's all.
I I gotta tell you, I think it's a big process.
It is, yeah.
It's a very big process, but I gotta tell you, when you visit those towns and head them, you get a sense of. Of what used to be like a little bit when you drive by some of these older houses that are. Kind of sort of maintained the way they always have been maintained.
Right.
You know, you kinda look at it and go, oh, that's pretty, if if you can tell it's an old house, tell it hasn't been, you know, the windows and doors are all the same and all all thick and stone walls. I mean, it it goes right down to.
Well, I'm just I'm just saying, we just wanna be aware of what we're getting into, that's all. Okay, I'm good.
I mean, we can do it from, it can be done from, it doesn't have to be done. Past history, it can be from present day out, saying we wanna maintain certain things too, I mean. But it gets, I think it's pretty legally entangled too, because you start telling people what they can do with their property, it gets. Sometimes they don't get very happy.
Yeah.
Thing is, you, if you get a house, you went, you know, the old house, it's like, uh. Wind blows one side, there'll be other side that's big, you wanna place the windows, but historical houses, you can't replace the windows. You know, I mean, an old house is inefficient and it's cold and drafty. But there are ways now, if your windows out, they mortise, they put silicone in it, they're very costly. For that probably about twenty, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars for the baby.
But I think it's a, I I think it's a discussion.
It's a discussion.
It's a discussion worth having, and there's a real lot of sentiment out there.
I guess. And I just wanted to.
So if you don't think we should have it, if you think it's.
No, no, no.
It's too much of a.
I think we just need to look into it, to say if somebody wants to do stuff, that's all.
Well, I mean, so OJ, you've been here a while, you know, so you've been here a while too, but. Has anyone ever come up and said, we think that we needed? Plan boards, planning board or board of select meetings, say anything about historical values?
Most of the people on Route Three, you know, we got that couple.
Yes, yeah, but I mean, Lincoln's been here for a long time, I don't recall.
They've been coming here since, you know, their kids are little, I think one of their kids now manages one of the restaurants or something here.
But if you think about it, so much is left us already that people don't remember. What are you gonna, what really are you gonna keep so that, I mean, it's worth doing, that's all I'm asking.
I think it's worth putting in here for a discussion point under natural and cultural resources.
Okay.
Discussion, you know, they might find a questionnaire, there might be some one or two questions related to it, and let's see where it goes. I would, again, be very cautious before we made any decisions about exchanging anything that we adopt or commissions or was like. Alright, what does that really mean, how much power and? I was gonna say, Joe, nearly the same thing you said, that I have someone who wanted to just replace the windows in the house. And 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 the regulations made it so costly. They 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 couldn't do it and and.
Going back in for it.
Yeah, that's not what we wanna get into, that's not what I want. But but if there's some sort of. You know, designation that enhances and allows homeowners to. Um, you know, have designated historical places or put a plaque up or, you know, I'm all for that.
Well, I think the whole purpose is this RFP.
Right.
It is to to find somebody who hopefully will have some information about historic preservation areas and what it's into. That that's all reasonable, put this out, so this is to ask them truly too about. How much knowledge do you have about historic preservation areas and towns and, you know, we. We would want them to be able to say that, tell us what it would entail, cause I have no idea. Maybe like OJ said, there's various levels of it, you know?
Yeah, they think, well, that sounds right too. But when I was saying on uh line, they I think they did kind of lower slugger, basically, they said. These houses would be out. And that's kind of like that.
Everybody, are we leaving that in there? Um, like I said, I think the master plan steering committee, I I don't think. Well, we're taking that to planning board and running, we always have.
I think it's it's hard enough to get the planning board to focus on this.
I agree, so we'll take that right out, and that that leads us down to the bottom of the page, says. The con- consultant will be expected to attend master plan steering committee meetings, I wrote. To attend.
Board master plan meetings.
Planet, right, planning board. Master plan and town Lincoln resident meetings. Or you don't say town resident, what 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 the public outreach meetings?
Right, which it says that in first sentence.
Yes, or does it?
Does it public and then also. Traditional public participation. Planning board master plan meetings.
Okay, planning board master plan meetings. And then on page six, Carol, and another one for bid delivery tools. Super ten coffees.
Paul has said two. That was two, it's two numbers everybody wanted, okay, so.
Well, no, no, I mean, when I said two, I was assuming. I mean, they should deliver enough coffee, so the whole planning board had coffee. And so the, you have a copy for town hall, so that's it.
So right, right now, we just have five, five hours.
And the planning board office would be six.
Good for a good time, Paul?
I've already thought what one's gonna approach, so. That's that's, we'll 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 get that.
Do we want?
How many coffees?
Do you want hard copies or electronic?
Well, I think here the.
We're gonna pay for it one way, the other, we have a, the RFP goes off and they're gonna charge for coffees anyway, so if. Can we make our own save, I don't know if we're gonna save enough, but why pay somebody else to make our coffees, does that make sense? I mean, if you're, say, who was the king, and they're gonna, the other one chose, and they say, okay, they want ten coffees, somebody submit their proposal, it's gonna be, they're gonna. Look, put that in their proposal, give you the coffee, so.
Especially when someone presents an RFP, I, they they make the problems. But ten seems a lot to ask of of an RFP, it's different if once you contract someone that we want. Coffees for everyone. I'm happy to look at an electronic copy, we just wanted to ask them for two, three. But if we wanna ask them for for six.
Why can't they send us with non-coffee, and have a print it out here and not.
Well, hard copies are easier to make, you can print them yourself, but.
When we're looking at a number of pages, I mean, there are, how many pages could these things be, right?
How many pages do you think their response, the RFPs are gonna be?
How big were RFQs?
Generally, they put down like their qualifications, uh what what other. Uh master plans they've done, what communities they've worked or references, I mean, it could be a twenty plus page document.
Well, we definitely wanna have. We definitely wanna have at least, I would think, two hard copies.
Yes.
Because one needs to go at state town hall. One can be copied. Now, and then an electronic copy, how about how about two hard copies and an electronic copy? And if we need more hard copies, I'm sure they can provide them at cost, so all people start off.
Okay, so that means that you're gonna, you're gonna. I mean, I know that you guys, you will, um you're gonna. Be looking at it in your office, on your computer, or Joe, it's on his phone.
I have a, I have three computers. But you know, we have my notebook.
I take back my my suggestion. When I, when we looked at these submissions for the town engineers, they they submitted enough copies for all of us to have one. And it was easier for me to highlight and make my notes than it was to do electronic copies. Print it out and write my notes on each page and I want to write it all, so. I guess I have one for every planning board member and one for town hall, one for the plan.
Alright, six.
It's just a lot easier that we do this. And if somebody else wants.
Always, it's my time, and you're paying for it, make.
Right, and and also an electronic copy as well. So that if someone in town wants to see it for some reason.
Is there a reason why you're requesting an MS Word document as opposed to PDF? If if uh if you ask something for me.
Only because that's what it said in the.
Right, so let's change, I agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's say a- as a PDF.
Yeah.
And not a word document. Uh on a portable USB drive, do we need that? I would say no.
I say if it's electronic, I mean, you can get it through email, right, you know, they just email you, not not on the drive, so it's just not too big, you know?
It should just say separate, and and one electronic copy as a PDF period, cross off the rest of it. On the date that we wanna consider, um them being addressed by no later than.
Well, today's the twenty third. Is, if we agree on this, is something get out the end of this week?
No, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, so I have a zoning board meeting coming up next week, so.
Okay. Okay, so let's say it goes out May first ish, that gives them thirty days.
It's had enough time, let's get to sixty days, cause we want them to do it, have time to do it, not be rushed, you know, then. I would get in sixty days to do it.
Yeah, we'll see what Friday, Friday is, we want.
Yeah. First day of July is the first. When, you want the first of July?
The first twenty, July, July fourth, June twenty seven. Because on May first, it's one, two, four.
I mean, this can be a long process.
It gives eight weeks.
Eight weeks, that should be enough.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So so.
Like twenty seven, June twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
How about Friday?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, Friday, June twenty seven. Alright, and on page seven, Carol has some more project deliveries.
So, um, we didn't, we we were not so clear from, or previously did before, so. I wanna make sure that I'm not the one making the twelve copies or whatever this is. Make sure that, you know, they deliver them, find them and all that stuff. Cause that was another, quite a big, uh, issue like cops. And, you know, it took me, I had to follow around, I had to find a good price, and I had to drive it there. I had to download all the files, I mean, it just.
I think you should have the same amount, one for each planning board member, one for the. One for the planning office and one for the admini- for the town administration board of select. A- as far as hard copies and then one reproductive hard copy. Under their responsibility, so you would be having five. Seven. Actually, it'd be eight, eight, all total.
Now, if there's, let's say, two alternative alternates on this board by then.
Right.
That brings it to ten, if you want a public copy that's available, that doesn't use towels or carinas or something, that's eleven. I think twelve's a a good number, I think, yeah. Yeah, and again.
You have to, you're keeping it for ten years. So what happens is, like, I've already given the copy, I I don't have any extras. I've already given you your copy of the master plan, so you lose it.
Alright.
I mean, we have one in the office, but that would mean that I'd have to go over and have a copy, scan it, you know, all that stuff.
Twelve is fine, so we'll leave that as is.
Yeah, twelve.
Number three, maps, supporting map data prepared by the consultant for the report provided in format compatible with the latest version of. A R C G I S, so the.
That that's important, uh because you want to have that as a layer. Associated with your online property tax maps, um. You know, that'll be part, like, right now, we have the two-year to, I mean, we have a bunch of state data in there, which is very exciting. Um, the state now has the two-year, or we got two-foot topo layer, whereas opposed to before, we had. I think it's twenty feet or forty feet, something like that. But that, that data, um, a lot of times in those reports, you look at the old report. It's hard to read it because it's so tight. Uh but it can be, it can be in this R G I S, and it can become a layer on your.
We'll leave that, cause it's, it's from out to the town.
And the the spreadsheets and the charts, the same idea, um like. If you wanna update it, instead of waiting ten years, if you wanna update it periodically. It's already in the Excel spreadsheet, and you can change some of the data.
Change the formulas, so.
Update it.
That's fine, so we'll leave that.
Just gotta make sure one thing, you keep the old data, and just rewrite over, like, a lot of stuff been done before.
Hold on, you just, you save it as a new document or a new.
A lot of step before, with the old data, with the rate, you step over, you can't go back to it. It happens, you have somebody up and it's doing math before, nothing gets covered over. The the the, in other words, if we drew up the old maps, it's like that was new, it's it was back thirty years ago and what?
This is saying here that we'll open. Uh for all such planning board meetings, if that's that's not a meeting on that day, did you sit down?
July ninth would be the planning board meeting following that deadline.
So I would say that we would open up.
Open somewhere.
And we would propose opening them.
Good openings will be scheduled.
As ordered in contract.
Right, before that proposal results.
Right.
Good openings will be scheduled, um.
For July ninth, at the at the planning board meeting on July ninth.
Uh, the chart looks up, so we can go back to some of the returns we have from the old plans, so that from the downtown committee. We had downtown committee one time telling us how we liked town to look, but since then, have stuff to put on it and all this going and removed.
Hold on, we have a copy.
No, I'm saying, if you have a copy, but most of the stuff that you can put down, that's on the wish list. That was all latest time we made ten, but nothing that we've been done on it.
So, I guess I have a question on how we do this. So we're asking for this now, for their, for their proposals.
You go to see how much, how much money they're talking about.
That's my, that that was my question. Was, so if they say they want. If if the lowest bidder, the best bidder, whoever we decide to choose, is three times more than we have in our CIP. Obviously, we can increase our CIP this year during the CIP process to 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 make it work. But it might not be. How do we let them know that it's based on the availability of the funding at the town at the time or something, so they realize that, you know? We may not have all the funding, so the project maybe have to go out a year, something like that, how how do you let them know that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well.
So we send this out, we send something in.
Part of it we pay for in in this year in front of the next year.
So you write the contracts, so it's it's paid, it's paid one year, it's something, but you may not get that amount into CIP, so. You know, I mean, it it, I would think that, is new language, what's the language, OJ, but uh, based on appropriations made at town meeting, CIP at town meeting or something like that. Is there something we can put in that says that this?
I say the the the, a standard language is put in that we have the right to accept and reject any of all. Applications.
Right.
And then they put in, if they put in a bid and it's a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the lowest bid.
And we only got fifty.
We we can reject them all.
But we don't wanna reject them all.
We we, or we could, we could put in, say, they'll sign a contract that says, we'll pay, I don't know what you said there, but we'll pay you X amount now. In X amount, next year contingent upon town meeting approved.
So we can negotiate with them once we.
I don't know.
Choose.
Okay, well, they might, they might not wanna finish the work until after the, the money's been approved, in other words, they'll they'll start it this year. They'll wait.
I think you have to ask, because, um. Somehow there's a warning bell ringing on my head about this, um, you might wanna talk to Corinne about. Because I think that if you change the terms, then you have to reject all of the bids.
But if you put something in here that says. If it would be based on appropriations, if we don't, should be able to put some wording in here that says. The town has has funding, some funding available, and if the proposal is more than that. It would depend, uh, funding would be dependent upon town approval. Can we, can we put in a timeframe for acceptance? Maybe if we don't have the money, we could say we need ninety days, uh, six months. Well, I think, I think if you put, put that, we have some money and that funding is is dependent upon Markstown meeting, then they'll know. Okay. You know, because they they can go into the town CIP and figure out how much money do we have. They know what we have, it's it it's a public document, so they should be able to look. Maybe that's. I'm just wondering if if a timeframe was enough of variation that if we didn't have to say anything else. I mean, say, look, this, you know, whoever we choose. I mean, I I I think we can negotiate, but I don't, I mean, because I don't think that you can negotiate and say and say that you're gonna reject them all.
You get basically bids. This isn't a bid. There are strict rules that apply, how how you're supposed to respond to a bid proposal.
This isn't a bid, this request, request for proposals like there was for these, and we didn't, they didn't write a bid for any of that, so, I mean.
I I don't know nothing about.
I don't either.
So why don't you ask Corinne?
Can can we just put in something that that acknowledges that if it's over our budget, we we have to go to town meeting to get.
That's what I started with.
Or we can, or we can piecemeal the whole project, we do some of that stuff and we can have a thousand and have them do this complicated stuff.
Yeah.
We go, we go to three different times ourselves, clearly, pay you about three hundred thousand dollars a town, uh. Most of the stuff's already done.
I don't know. I don't quite agree with that, so I, I looked at it and said, if I was gonna try and wade through that document. And make change, where would I start? And and it was like, all over the place, so much has changed, ten years here, it changes so fast. And I think it's gonna be, there's a lot of it that's not relevant, some of the things are relevant, but I bet there's more not relevant than than is because of the changes, I mean. Think about what changed here in ten years, oh my god.
Plus, this still has been the public input session.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't know who, if we have a public input session, I mean, you know, I don't know how many people we had that last ten years ago, but.
Well, we had more than one.
But you're here all day, for multiple hours, talking to people kind of one on one.
We had, I don't know, two or three different people.
Right, so so. Who's gonna? Sit and summarize all of the various discussions and points and ideas that were brought up and those, and and put that into a a format for planning board to discuss. I think we need to hire someone to do the bulk of this work.
Well, then we.
Be interesting to see what what it comes in at.
Right.
Uh.
We can always, as you just said, we can always, if it comes in so high, that we say that this thing is just. Out of reach, out of reach, then we can look at those things and say, what can we pull out and talk to them and negotiate with them, whatever the. First, the companies we want to say, look, can we save some money by doing some of the sections ourselves, which ones would you suggest that we? That we look at doing ourselves, and then maybe we can negotiate that, but at least you're dealing with whoever you want to at that time.
Those kind of companies, a lot of that already, they already have in hand, because they can't pull it to.
Right. And the consultants, they would help us out with some of this stuff.
I think it would be more practical to pull up what they can do this year. What they can do next year and divide the task into two two sections. Having whoever does it lead the whole process, do it to calendar years, we can pay the bulk of it in this year. And then what's not in the budget, we can pay for next year.
Well, it comes out, it comes out, they probably do all one shot, depends what we have in the budget.
Correct.
I don't know how long it took to make the last one, but I'll bet it took longer than a year.
It seemed to take a long time. I mean, as I don't think spreading this over two, first of all, we're having a bid back until.
Right.
June twenty seventh.
And then you have to fit it in between, you're gonna have to fit it in between planning meetings, so I I don't see how it's done in one year, myself.
But already happened, because they're not gonna start until August.
Right.
So so they're gonna be working to the next calendar year.
Anyway. So what was the wording you were gonna put in there, Carol? Well, there was, based on the available, the funds that, funding that we have and. What else was to say?
I didn't say, if if we put, we have the right to uh reject.
It's hacked or reject any and all this, yeah.
But I thought you said something, you did say something, well, funding town meeting.
Over our budget, have to go to town meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
The dollars, cream, for the federal.
Ask, ask her.
All right. And then. There was a a X. There's a number on that, or are you, you highlighted that?
Oh, no, um, uh, it was to remind me that I had to find it.
Okay, this is the right number.
I mean, I gotta double check, but that was the number of Marshall's town. I'm assuming it's the same.
It's, if that was the correct one, still the same.
All right. Any other comments or? Okay, so you'll make those changes and then we can get it out?
Yeah, I know.
Need to be signed by anybody, then get sent out, or it just, it says, rest of the proposal, but it's, but it's assigned by. They bring it up, it's here, the whole planning board is. That's why. I don't need. I don't need it. Update on parking plans, Alpine Pizza, um, has given us, Rego Jin has given us, was, this is, they gave us the. Parking plan for the Alpine Pizza, um, the milk marketplace, they are still working on. We were gonna send them out a letter, but in lieu of them providing, I met Carol, it was last week. That it moved them. Yeah, I'm coming to the table with the information for the pizza and they, they said they would get the one from the market, this, I. Advised Carol, we don't really need to send the letters, lots of work. It's not gonna work on, we don't receive anything, and. Rego's DM Mark stopped in, happened to stop in, he said that we're working on, they were gonna continue to get that done. So that's just an update on most of. Uh, it's safe, they're required on all the restaurants and former retail spaces.
Well, it's just the, you know, the hanging question, you won't know until you see the.
Does everybody get copies of of the parking?
Once the two thousand three parking plan, we, a plan that was submitted. Um, that was put together by, you know, at the time, it looked like a kind of collection of people. Owned the mill.
Right.
Mill hotel, they can send it along, yeah. That's just a photograph that I took.
Yeah, I took, blew it up, I I counted all the parking spaces, so it didn't have a total count of parking spaces, so.
But they're still working on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, also working on that.
So.
Yeah.
I'll give them the information.
That's all it was.
Right, is there anything we're gonna do with this, I didn't stick it in the file, no? Okay.
Well. When Mark and I talked to him about. Coming in for site plan review for the pizza portion of it, if you wanted to keep it open. Past the hours of operation for the Alpine Adventures. Because he has enough parking to run that as a standalone business. And Karina had made a comment and the board did that, if he, if he was gonna run that as a standalone business on hours that were. When the Alpine Adventures was not open, he would have to come inside like this. Uh, like that little mark, I said, look, if you're raising up the site, I should have the part. It it, to me, it would make sense. Or, I mean, you can say that you're gonna run your Alpine Adventures the same hours that you're gonna have your pizza place open, but. That's splitting a lot of hairs, you know, I mean, is it really gonna be open? To me, it it would be easier to make for site plan review, just be done with it. I mean, it, it can change, it can change anytime it wants, but at least he would have to, have gone through site plan review. For it to be able to be open as a standalone business.
Is it necessary to go through full site plan review, or can there be a request to amend the conditions that allows. This one building, one portion of this business to stay open, um, extended hours? And invite, notify, yeah, notify, but is that that's that's the intention?
Just like you wanna buy a quart of milk, you don't wanna have the whole cow. Well, I know, but if you're gonna, if if you. If you're gonna run, I think you ought to run by the existing regulations we have now, which is site plan review, we don't have anything on a site plan review that allows us to amend. Current land use or some plants people have spent, so to me. What's it take to come in for, come in and do that? It's not much, he he could do that really. And it would be all legal and done with, it gets the same notifications, it's true stuff. I mean, he's he's showing, he's got a great map there that shows everything, you submit that, fill out application and beat that, I mean. It's it's a tick walk, really, it just added a tip on him.
Okay, so we, I mean. I know it would be, you can already vote for it, but this type of a, of a layout is adequate. It doesn't show geography, it doesn't show light, it doesn't show water, it doesn't show soil, it doesn't show a lot of stuff, we can wave, cast towards waves, all that stuff.
But, right, but the 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 reasoning we asked him to come in was.
Parking, park.
And that was the reasoning that we used to ask him to commit, he's addressed that issue. Now, as far as anything else on that property, we didn't ask him to address anything else, this is just addressing the parking.
But you're asking him to do the kind of the site plan review, which means he has to fill out that four page.
And he can ask, wait, right.
It's me, it's gonna request waves for all of those.
Yeah.
Things that are fairly relevant.
He 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 can say that it's already existed, and what he's asked.
No change.
No change, and he can say, what I'm looking for is to be able to extend the hours of operation when. The Alpine Ventures is not all for the pizza.
For just the pizza.
Yeah, and that way there, he can continue doing that all he wants. Now, I had asked that, so this was provided for by them. I had asked that, go for it, not, just go down.
Verify?
And verify, to say, go go down there and say, yeah, it it looks like they've got all the parking spaces, that's all. And like this, good contracts, make good friends, so, just go down and check and see, and that, that's all like. But I think it would help a lot. So. I see Paul the mayor is on the.
Hello.
Hello. Let us plan your information again. So you don't have to wade through all the rest of the stuff that we're doing.
Oh, that's okay, I'm not in a rush, so whatever works for you guys.
We have a little agenda, so we'll. I'll, uh, we'll put you up right here, so you don't have to.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead and explain to us what you wanna do.
Mm-hmm.
But you have your information.
Thanks, so essentially, uh, my dad moved into the country, lived with me now in Boston in my apartment, so. We got him some land in Lincoln, because he loves the mountains. And, uh, it's got sewers, uh, water, electric, very nice parcel. So we're trying to see what we can build, if anything, for him, so he can live there, um. And, uh, kinda went through a lot of different options, a lot of them very expensive. So there is one that seems to be very affordable, uh, compared to others, is these tiny homes. Uh, basically, they're under four hundred square feet, there is a number of companies all over the country that make them. Uh, and they're technically certified as some sort of RVIA certification. Uh, they're not really like drivable RVs, but they're on the wheels. And then under four hundred square feet, so they're not manufactured per uh rules. They're not modular per New Hampshire state rules. They're not modular per New Hampshire state rules, it's just basically certified as this RVIA. So essentially, we're just wondering if there is any path forward to. For us to just level a small part of the site. Uh, put some either foundation or some gravel and then tie down this tiny house. With some spikes in a very secure way. And then essentially hook it up to water sewer, electric, and have my dad live there. I know it's, uh, I've, I've looked through the guys' ordinance and the, the form, uh, for land use. Uh, so couldn't see if there is like a existing precedent, I did see some neighbors have some like RVs and stuff. I don't know how they usually do that, but we're just wondering if what you guys think, if there's any option for this type of setup.
So it's, it's, um, we were looking at the ordinance, we were thinking, you know, I was thinking temporary versus, uh, full time, I mean, uh. Permanent, and so, uh, like if you had a pad, I don't know if you need to, you're talking about doing your tie downs, um, so that would be more of a permanent.
If you would.
Setup, and then the water and sewer would also be a permanent. Uh, element, but then, you know, you could. Move the art, you know, the, uh.
Tiny house.
The tiny house.
I agree.
I'll set an R D, but if you can move the tiny house, you know, in the event, you know, you hook it up to a truck or something and. Take it off and replace it or, you know, move it somewhere else, um, so I wasn't sure how to deal with it. And, um, I thought maybe this would be a big question to ask you for guidance.
Let me ask, is, is a mobile home allowed in that zone?
Yes, so allow it, it's in the mobile residential, yes, it is absolutely allowed.
What is the? Difference between a mobile home and this, I mean, they're both on frames, they both have wheels.
Okay, so it wouldn't be taxable, however, the, um, you know, the pad and the, you know, the setup on the lot would be. Taxable, would enhance the value of that lot.
Why would it not be taxable?
Because it's on wheels, so it's. Well, so is the mobile size? Yeah, but I think the mobile home has to be, uh, greater than a certain size in order to be taxed.
Still has to be attached, this, this would have to, it might be tied down to the pad.
Great.
Under state law.
Okay, but that doesn't make it permanent, running hours tied down, well, I mean.
Well, if you look at, you know, the, um, what permanent is. It's a building or structure intended to remain in place for a period of more than a hundred and eighty days. In any consecutive twelve month period, and includes is not limited to. And then all the things that we could think of at the time, uh, with a tent, granite, a corner, square feet, a yard, a kiosk. Shipping container, enclosure, building made of fiberglass or some other temporary material. You know, fiberglass, quads, and hut, some other ten ways to go through, so those were the, you know, those were what came to mind when we. Trying to list those things, um. The temporary structure would be, you know, anything that doesn't meet that definition, so, um, so then the question is, whack? Do you have to move it after a hundred and eighty day thing, so we're just asking.
Right.
Will we treat, would, would you wanna treat this like a mobile home? And just, um, manufactured housing is allowed pretty much everywhere except the small businesses. We may that change, and so, uh, our inclination would be to give us, give them a permit for that, um, but.
So do you plan?
Tiny homes in the past, and we hadn't really discussed.
Do you plan to leave this here permanently?
Yeah, so this would be a permanent setup for my dad to live in essentially.
And, and would it have a slab underneath it?
We can build a slab if we have to, basically, uh, I think the issue would be if it has to be modular, so we, we. If it's modular, it cannot be, it cannot stay on the wheels anywhere, I think. Uh, but yeah, if we, we can, we can put a slab and just put the, some anchors there if that's a requirement. I know some people just put gravel and just put very deep, uh, stakes that makes it like secure for hurricanes and stuff. Um, but yeah, I think the bigger issue would be if we have to kinda change the entire structure to. Become a modular house, then it becomes like ten times more expensive.
What about we moving the wheels and, and putting it on blocks, is that?
Yeah, that's, we can totally do that, so that's totally fine, basically, yeah, whatever, whatever you guys think is the right process, it, it, removing the wheels will be totally fine. And it's commonly done, they put cinder block, sometimes they jack up the wheels a little bit, so they don't get spoiled by the, by the time, uh, so they're like an inch or a few inches above the ground. If we wanna remove them, that's totally fine.
I think one of the most insurance companies and underwriters do with trailers now. That you have to put a slab underneath with tie downs on it. Uh, so that they don't get blown over in case high winds and stuff like that, I, I believe, so, you know, that's a pay law. Yeah, yeah, I think that's what I was saying.
Yes, sure, yeah.
I think if you put it on a slab and tied it down and then it would be connected to the slab and. For, for me, I would think it, it would be just like a trailer, as OJ said, you know, and, and I think it would, all you would need would be a. A land use permit to be able to put it up there. But I think you probably really, I mean, if, if you're connected to, as long as you're connected to public utilities. And private utilities, you know, as far as power, water, and sewer, if you're connected to those. And I, and I, I would think it would be the same as a trailer, I would suggest that, you know, a land use permit, L E D.
All right, that would be perfect.
So then, um, so does everybody feel that way?
I'm, I'm gonna call the board, so we can find out, but.
My only concern is if, if pulling the wheels off makes it. I mean, this is gonna be, should be a taxable structure, it's, it's a, it's a full time living and thing, it's not a camper that they like. Park and then use, use on weekends. As a permanent, long-term livable structure should be taxed, if making, taking the wheels off makes it. Allows it to be taxed, then we should require the wheels to be taken off. I think the, 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 the concrete pad and the tie downs, I believe are required by state. For, again, a permanent living structure, this isn't a camp problem, um. With, with that being said, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Oh. So?
Question details, this is a, this is a lot we use in that area, correct?
Yeah, manufactured houses.
Make sure, because I want, we're gonna have a lot of evil drive from the neighbors, it's gonna blow an attack, then we forget. Instead, Billy's doing, I'm gonna make sure we're not leaving ourselves to it. And we open scrutiny, that we, we put something in that we, you know, we don't allow. So I'll, I know complaints, but.
Right?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with OJ on that, setting it up taxable, smoking off everything.
So. I guess the board has in favor of you being allowed to put that there with the concrete pad and if necessary. Uh, I guess I would just say, take the wheels off anyway, I don't know how long it's gonna, it probably shouldn't take too long, take two wheels off.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna look better too, so I mean, happy to.
Although, although there may be some problems with that. Logistically, if you take a look at that, I just thought about that, if you, if, if you take a look at it. And you take the wheels off, you would then have to do what OJ said, you might have to put, put it up on blocks. Cause the wheels are probably what it's resting on underground.
You have to put up a block anyway, you're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to do that anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you would have a, so you love the concrete pad. And, and this could be in a miniscule, concrete pad, blocks, um, and the wheels off, and the tie downs and, and the wheels off.
Yeah, I would, I, um, I, I would talk to somebody who, who does the tie down, you know, pads for regular manufactured homes.
Trailers.
Or trailers, um. If you have. Line is manufactured homes, I think, and I was.
Yeah, I think if you go to the trailer company, they will probably be able to set you up with someone.
Yeah.
That, that, be able, actually help you right out with that thing.
Yeah, perfect, basically, I was just wanna make sure it's not gonna have to be required to be either manufactured by HUD standards or. My, uh, modular by New Hampshire standards, uh, and because it's none of those certifications. So, but yeah, I mean, in terms of, it's basically this RVI certified, we'll take out the wheels, we'll make sure it's elevated, we'll make sure there's a slab and it's tied down, uh, no problem there.
The question I have.
Let me, Carol.
Some, it's, um, there's, is there any kind of, uh. Like energy co-compliance component to this, this, uh, structure? You know, like in the materials that you've got.
They'll get bring up.
Does it say anything about that, like, you did? You don't want your father to bring to that, you know what I mean?
And the, their energy code. Town had the same thing. If you're gonna build a new building, you need to show how much weight you have, type of windows you have, and roofs, and wind.
Right, well, like with manufactured home, there's usually something that the manufactured home company gives us. We put in the file, you know, this talks about those things, the insulation, um.
Location and windows.
Yeah. How much is for the window?
And the county also makes something usually for, for clients for manufactured homes for them out of. Snow load, the building will take. So the only grassland county has, not the rest of the state, the grassland county has that in their file, the snow load. And window, windshield. The manufactured housing, they'll develop a problem, could have that in your, in their data file, they can give us.
Well.
Well, we can, we can talk about that.
R B I A seal built to the A, and seal A eleven ninety five standards, I don't know what that standard is, but I'm sure that probably would.
It's got our third, it tells you on the product information, it has our thirteen.
Cell spray foam in the walls, and our nineteen close cell spray foam, and the floors are sealed, so I would think it would be close to standards that.
See, that's what I, I don't know.
So maybe you could get, um, I think what we've done in the past with a manufactured home. Uh, we were initially trying to figure out how to do this, and we got some, some kind of a statement from the company.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some sort of a statement saying it meets the, you know.
What code is that?
New Hampshire, um.
Yeah, sounds good, so I, I can, basically, it's the company is for Great Lakes tiny homes, so they basically build it for. Uh, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, et cetera, Michigan, uh, and then I'll, I'll, I'll get a sheet from them. With the exact specification, I, I just know that it's not, like, basically, it's not, they told me it's not a modular, it's not a manufactured certification. Uh, they have this other certification that they built, um, but yeah, happy to provide any specs there.
But, what Carol's saying, what you're saying, Carol, is in order to have that there as a permanent structure, it needs to meet the energy code. And that energy code, if, if you call Carol, you could probably get, get them that, is that in our ordinance?
Uh, no, the state, state code, um, it's in, it's in our application for the land use permit. Yeah, the information is right on the cover.
So if you stop down to see Carol. She can give you, when she gives you the land use permit. She can give you, actually won't give you the land use permit until she finally got that meets that code, but. Um, she can tell you what code it has to meet, and you should probably check that out with your manufacturer, just to see. If it's comparable.
Okay, sounds good.
And then if it is, get a letter, a statement from them stating that, so that you can give that to the town.
Perfect.
We'll just put in the file.
Okay, we'll do that, sounds great.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any other? Okay, and, yeah, what's that? Okay, cool.
Thank you so much.
They're actually making something like this in maintenance, look at that one today. Good luck, good luck, yeah, looks good.
Thanks, guys, I'll see you, I'll see you in town.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, bye.
Bye. Update on, uh, meeting with Blue Mountain, seeing if there's work pertaining to future development of South Peak. We had a meeting the other day with Karina and OJ and myself and Carol. Jay and Sean, um, about Blue Mountain and their, it was basically the, almost the same. Um, process that they, actually, what was the same that they used at that. Um, playhouse, but they came in and talked about what they were gonna do. I have some plans here, if you wanna look at them. Um, they invited me. Their by date and what they were gonna do, um. It's, I had heard that it was five hundred, it's not five hundred, so it's getting frank. It's two hundred, is it two fifty or two thirty? A, a scalable terrain on the South Peak side. And on the Black Mountain side, it's a blade scheme, so they're gonna be doing some over there. They're not sure when they're gonna do it, good question, I asked them, let me finish before you do that. I asked them to come in and present, see if they wanna talk to the planning board. Um, they said what they would like to do is to come in through the, um, master plan process. And be a part of any public outreach programs that we have that, you know, that. As far as having a section on, when we start talking about the development of, of Lincoln, how it's growing and stuff like that, they. They'd be willing to come in and, and, uh, talk about that, my mistake, I mean, you know. Um, go ahead.
Uh, you're dealing with a three hundred eight from healthy profit?
Yes.
You have not committed to take place of you creating that problem. Ever, you only started at the bridge going east, not west. I'm serious.
Well, well, so they have to keep a take place of you, making take place of you, they don't end that path. My understanding, my understanding is in.
It's not part of the original development contract.
Yes, it is.
Not, not when, but not when the tenant text came in, that was not part of the big problem.
I'm talking about South Peak.
We're talking about.
I'm gonna ask.
We're not talking about South, wait a minute.
I'm talking about South Peak.
No, we're talking.
We're talking about Blue Mountain.
Well, Blue Mountain's already getting, they already, they already have next, we're not the first, they're not ready, it's twenty years ago.
Correct.
Correct.
So you said, they're using, right, we said tough, you could tag one of them all the time.
Well, there is a South Peak site, that's it.
The name of that peak.
South Peak is named as big as possible. It's not, it will, it will encompass some of the development in. In the Halcy property, cause I, I, I had asked them about that, they commented, yes, that.
They commented, they've committed to take place of you, boy.
But, well, so the questioning here is.
We would, if the ski fields in here, Blue Mountain, if we put a ski field on.
So all of that was dealt within the one thousand and eighteen units, cause what they did was they broke it up. More I've read, they broke it up into two portions, the original portion was, I forgot how many units. And then when you added the Alsey property, it was a total of a thousand and eighteen, so all along, they had really.
That's South Peak Resort, the development, this is all Blue Mountain gravitation.
That's what we were talking about the other day, I was trying to commit, tell Joe that, that thousand and eighteen goes all the way across there. That, that, that pyramid section.
Then, right, the master plan for South Peak development. Includes the Halcy property.
No, very quick came in, it was, I haven't seen any check in tents.
We, we just, we accepted it a few months ago.
And they asked me, I'm gonna be, if they include the healthy property, they didn't answer. Mr. Walter.
Well, why?
We included points of aggravation. We approved it, we approved the master plan for the whole South Peak Resort.
Right.
Including the house property.
Yeah.
The master plan for Blue. So get some of those boxes up, maybe all of those boxes.
None at all.
The, the master plan for Blue Mountain.
New trail is gonna be, gonna have to come in.
But, but it's, no. They, because what, what they have, Joe, is they, they would go through the Forest Service, and the Forest Service has various classifications that they use. For approving Blue's work, some of it only needs a, there's three, I think, three different distinctions they use, one was.
Environmental assessment.
Right, eight, right, which.
Environmental.
Impact study.
Impact study, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and there was one other one, but for example, over here in the blades, they only needed environmental assessment. Which means they don't need to go to any public hearing, cause they've already got that approved. However, when they go over into the South Peak section, they need, they are gonna have to go out for an E I S.
That's what I, that's the point I tried to make.
Right. But, you know, what OJ is trying to say correctly is that Blue Mountain's portion is. Different than the private development of South Peak on the farm.
Blue Mountain, duration, exception, fact, it's so many feet, person, river, which comes under portion.
I mean, and, and there's gonna be a lot of comment period on all. Period on all of this. You know, but, you know. Just to let you know. You know, we, we went, we talked about it, it's in the. As, as Brian North said, and J S Campino over there, they said, you know. We're thinking about it now, it could be. Five years, ten years, twenty years. So, but they, they are willing to come in, the reason I wanted to go and want to talk was I wanted to make sure that. As part of the master plan. That they would come in and talk about it.
Okay, when syntax came in, the total taken over nine hundred units. That was one thousand and eighteen, I think, three hundred acres, forty eighteen units in. They can have more than that, come with that. And they include the Haldy property.
That, that's all I'm not sure, we, we do this multiple times.
Well, yeah, I mean, like I said.
The reason plan was nine hundred plus, this is for the. The reason South Peak. How do you probably include that, three hundred more acres? You can let that, yeah, move, let that go vague.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to date on.
But that's not, yeah, that, those boxes.
Don't argue, you know, look.
It's not true.
The, the, the whole thing is that. It is gonna come before. Public review, Blue Mountain's. P I S portion. And when South Peak gets ready to do. The Halcy property. As, as long as it beats their master plan, then, and they'll be fine if they don't do that thousand and eighteen. Alright, Carol, training off for planning board members.
Okay. So, we have Jonathan coming in. He's gonna train both the planning and the zone, they originally said. Had to choose one or the other, or had to come down from force. And I said, please, please, if there was any way you could do it like that, half and half. And he said, yeah. So, he's coming on.
July thirtieth.
And, so I wanna know if I can sign before you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I give you that date, I'll do that, so, yeah. OJ said, yeah, Mike?
Yes.
Joe, you wanna go to that training?
I, I thought I did it online, I thought there was something.
Well, no, not yet. No, I mean, I, I'm never gonna do it online, it's.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, I thought it's. I mean, I was able to put myself into the course online.
Oh, yeah, you tend to that.
I think I already did.
Please do. Uh, you know, the stuff that I sent you before, there's a bunch of stuff online. You know, a lot of it's free, you know, it's one hour, lunchtime.
Well, I think it had to do with this here that you sent, and there was a link that you could. Put yourself into the class.
Oh, that was. That was other stuff.
Well, I applied for everything, so.
Anyway, so he's coming here. And um, we're gonna see how many, uh, I mean, the C B A next week, cause I'm gonna do an organizational meeting. Next week, so I'll see. How many of them can come, and then I'll see how much room I have left. And then if I have enough room left, then I'm gonna see about inviting them.
So, I, you were talking about.
And then, and then our staff.
You were talking about a um. An alternate. I had talked to, during voting day, I talked to that. Lady who live a little bit, Margarita.
Yeah, Margarita.
And.
Or, or something like that.
Yes, yes, Margarita, frenzy, I, I talked to her today. I told her I would, I would reach back out to her after, you know. That the, the vote, and if I was on planning board, and, and see if she was interested, so. I did reach back out to her today. She's very interested, and she will be contacting you. Um.
Yeah.
With, with a letter for uh, an alternate position. So she said she'd try and get to it this week, but. At least we'll have one. Um, and, and I think if we. We probably should have at least two. So if, if we want, I think we should put out.
Do you wanna post it?
Yes, that was my point, yeah.
So how many?
Yeah, sure.
What was your question, Carol?
Do you wanna um, post for? Uh, three, or do you wanna just assume the margarita will be a yes, and then? Uh, post for two additional?
I thought Margarita's gonna come in and talk, and, and, and I'd already told her that she could come in. So, I mean, I, I think I would just ask, ask for any interest out there, and we can decide how many we want.
You didn't have applicants, but you know, for the third one. It allows three, if I'm not, I'm correct.
Yeah, the statute allows you to have five.
We've had three in the past, I think that's fine. Because an honorary member wants to sit in. So we can do that. Um. I also asked Carol to put on. Uh, discussions. Pertaining to. Land use, land ordinance for next March town meeting, I met with Karina. Um, and. She thinks that we should. Look at some of our ordinances. I received an email today from. Uh, Sarah, from DuBois and King. Uh, in a meeting that we had with T R D. We asked her to take a look at. Our ordinances. And, you got that, right?
Yeah, I, it popped up, right, but I saw, and it seems alright with him.
That's okay, spoke forward, she did, was she addressed some of the things, questions, so. Um, prior to the next meeting, we'll make sure that we get that out to everybody. And uh, I know OJ said, mother thinks he wanted to talk about. In the past. You have a list, you still have that list?
I, I think, I think we threw that and.
Did we take care of your list?
I think we eliminated some stuff, but we addressed them.
Okay.
I don't have anything, I don't think, I don't know what, but I don't think I have.
Well, I think I hid your list somewhere, and I don't, no, but anyway, maybe some things I, I think that. One of the big things we need, this board needs to take a look at is Park. Cause I think parking is a big issue. And I think we're gonna need help with it. And. I think we're gonna be able to use people like North County Council. To hopefully help us. But, I mean, based on. Things that Sean has done, and the deficiencies, and how we handle those, and where we go there. Uh, I mean, there was talk at the. Meeting with Blue Mountain about even. Maybe using some town land and putting up a. Parking garage, so to speak. Uh, with other developers picking in to help us as paying for it, but. That's, that's a big. That's a big question, and. And that's a probably, we should probably take some time and look at that.
Rentals are kinda coming in.
Well, that, that knows Scott, but I mean. There was, I mean, and, and I'll give you, for example, and. I didn't really like the way it, it came down, but. I mean, Little Mountain's talking about all the extra trailers they were gonna have, and. And when we talked about parking, even OJ said, no. You're, you're not saying that you're not gonna add, add any additional parking, are you, and they pretty much said, no, we're not gonna add any additional park. They were, they're gonna handle it. By. Where they sell their tickets, whether they sell more, sell less, so busy. Well, I understand it, but I don't wanna argue with it, all I think that is that the town should. Planning board should take a look at. What we have. Our ordinance. How it's deficient now. I mean, we've got kids coming in. That request stat parking. And they wanna put six parking spaces. And a drive. For, I don't know, how many rooms, I don't know how still.
Well, they, um, they're going. Before the C B A, because they want to, it's a single family home, it's got a. Attached lawn unit on, on the back. And they wanted to buy the single family home, so it's gonna be three units, seven. Well, they, he came before you already. Um, so it would be basically a trifecta, um. And he would need six, uh. Cars, so one of the six parking spaces would be in the garage. And then there would be two additional cars in front of that garage, then two. Are two. Along south, so it'd be. One, two, three, four, five, six.
But anyway, we'll get people that are coming up and create ways. Try and. Do parking. It's. That's one. That's one that every lady.
No, it's not.
It, it's, isn't it Joel?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Joel's old house?
What's, what's?
It may be, yeah.
It's Joel's old.
Then, maybe it is, there's no trailer on that one, there's more trailer.
Is there a trailer?
No, it looks like, it originally was a shed. Then they made two stories. Kind of looks like a salt, you know. But they added a garage to the side. You know, with one car garage itself, so.
He's like an awful much, that property.
Sean has, Sean's done some preliminary work, going for sponsor, and. There are. Many areas that are.
Right.
Deficient, and the amount of parking required for the current businesses that they have. So, I mean. John needs to look at it. And, you know, we need to look at our ordinances, that, that's all the ones I think. We should probably. Get a little bit of help with. Say. What? You know, take a look at the facts and say, this is where we're deficient. This is what we could do with our ordinances to help going forward. And, you know. But, we, we need to enforce them. Cause we have pretty much a lot, so if they were enforced. And maybe. Making, making it. A little more difficult to get a waiver. Instead of just throwing, you know, stuff on the walls. Well, I mean, a waiver, from what I understood, was what hardship issue, right? That's supposed, that's supposed to be. Same, you're gonna have a planning board too. Well, I'm just saying that. Maybe some things were a little bit loose. And maybe you just need to tighten things up a little bit. Yeah, whatever the reason, we're in, we're, we're, we're now finding, finding ourselves in this position, it's on us. Start to document some of this stuff, and it's just. I mean, it sounds like that, we're gonna grow by. Another big ski area. And, you know. I just, we're gonna be overwhelmed. With the uh, influx, I mean, it's. And the parking. And, and talking with Blue, the access. Is still gonna come down Main Street. So. With now Conway. You know, the time to look at is that it, get everybody in the same room and say, look. I mean, Karina sat there and said, and probably rightfully so. The Y O K doesn't think that the town has any issue. But, that's today. You know, and. Karina and OJ discussed. That, how many people have ever come into town and said. You think there's a park problem, probably only Paul Boat, cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna call states, like. You know, I can't get here or there, that's, that's true. You know, but. A lot of people say things, but they don't come in and make comments to. Planning for the. Board selection or the planning board, or, you know, so. How much reform really is there? It, it's perceived at this point, it's not. I mean, it is reality, it's just not right. Everyone's, there's just people who are, they might complain to you or me, but they're not coming to.
Coming to the right.
To the right place. And maybe, that's what we gotta do, you know, maybe we gotta, as part of the, e- even the. The master plan, maybe parking in town and traffic in town isn't. Something that people wanna talk about, if it is. Then, then we can do it that way too.
Out of any time I spoke into anyone about the town, traffic and parking are the two big issues. But they don't come to you. I, I understand, I, I start talking to them and say the same thing. Nobody comes in and nobody does anything. And then, you know, you complain about it.
Well, we, we do have the website, and you can make comments on the website, so. You can just. You know, a lot of people. Uh, it's too much trouble to come in here and say anything, but maybe before. Flying. Everybody's on their phone all the time. Take it.
Typically, part of the.
Plane to the town website.
The master plan is in traffic and. How things get around the town, I believe. So, you know, that could be, and, and, and I believe what we're looking at tonight, there's something to tell the parking, and stuff like that, so. Hopefully, we can address some of that at that time, but. Uh, okay, so. Anyway, the, the point of putting that on there was, if you have any. Things you think that you might want, should be looked at. Uh, and I will have Carol make sure she sends that thing, Sarah, who, who was a kingo. And OJ, if you have any things you think.
I will.
You know, just. So I'm down. If we start, same, I mean, if, if we start now. Maybe Frank Marshall can come up with something.
March fourteenth, we have two applications. May, may. So that's about me. Um, yeah, I think it was. The one line adjustment, we didn't have big deals. They posted tomorrow.
We did the appointment of alternates. Uh, rules of procedure. Um, and talking with. I can't remember where this, I, I think I was talking. We were talking to uh, Sarah about this. When we said that we could address them, Karina. And so we could address some things in our rules of procedure. And I think it had to do with the, how applications were handed in.
Well, I think you wanted to know, um, what our process was, so that's. The packet here, the, the top one is red border. You know, this, this is basically our in-house, um, project. And.
Yes, there's a couple of them, and.
There's the land use authorization permit process, and um, we need to change those two. That's why they, that's in there. And then there's site plan review. Subdivision process.
I think Steve, I really had the whole board you and talk about this. And also, I just think it's better that way. Um.
So anyway, the rules of procedure, I did give them to you, I believe. And then I gave you a little article, originally had one article that I handed out, I think to Paul, but then I realized that it belongs. Um, so. Uh, if you wanna take them home and look it on.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. One was for all of us. One was for. Rules of procedure, so.
I mean, it's been a while since they've been updated, and we, we should take a look at those. Um.
Back to the land use authorization permit procedures again. It looks like. This page. Is that the existing one?
Uh, well, the first one, yeah, that was the one after the emails, first one after the emails. Okay, so the, that's. But, um. So we hadn't said, right, go ahead and make that change, so that's why it's in red.
Okay, the first one is not in red. Okay, so that's, is that what it is right today? Without any changes.
But actually, it is, it is the one in red, we just didn't say, okay, well, go ahead and. It's not going. I mean, this is just an in for an end of thing.
So there's land use authorization permit standard procedure for rule and approval. There's also. Planning board site and subdivision review process. And then, there's land use authorization permit standard procedure.
With the red.
With the red. Those three, well, yeah. Take a look at those, and we can, hopefully, we'll get a full board, and we can.
Okay. I'm totally confused.
Why are you confused?
All right. If you look at, in the packet, the first one that says land use authorization permit standard procedures.
Does that mean red in it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that was the original one, um, we have been talking about making changes.
This is from here.
Right.
We just have a colorized it, so.
If you look at, this one, it has red.
Right.
See all red?
Right.
So, those are the ones that, it's a duplicate with, with suggested revisions and.
Changes that we talked about, you know, that we just didn't say.
We just didn't formalize.
Okay, so, the second one is the one we're looking, looking to adopt.
Well, you don't have to adopt it, we just did it in-house.
Okay, so the red just showed what you've changed?
Right. So, when we look at, what we'll look at is for any update, changes, everyone.
All right, so, so, you look at these two. The original, the, 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 and now it's technical, okay, uh, no big deal. The next big set of changes is under application review phase. Right? Number three. See the all of the stuff that's crossed out? Here? If this was before the change, I don't see that even in here, so what was?
The, the, Rich goes in earlier version.
Of the change?
And we have gotten rid of that before.
That's why we're looking at it.
Okay. That's what confused me, is like, you couldn't have crossed that out of the original, it's not in the original, but it's crossed, okay, I just. This is why I was confused, it's like. All right. I get it now. So, so this was a, a working document, and you made some changes, cross those changes out, they don't apply any. I'm not confused anymore.
You're okay?
But that's, that's why it's just like, this didn't match this.
Timing was, we kept trying, we kept working on the timing, like.
Okay.
You know, how many days did we need to review it, um?
Okay.
Before, because we were coming to, you know, these applications were coming before you, and we hadn't had a chance to.
This is just that, this is only one big section of red, everything else is minor, and I couldn't find what, like, what we changed. Uh, from, I was already. Got it, got it. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that one.
And then, um. So.
When we really said you wanted this last game, you were more, some kind of admiring. Making an admiring.
And the rules of procedure, we're gonna do this at a future meeting?
Yes.
And these are the current ones, and need the two, to, to, to help, to help look at this.
Correct. I mean, the ordinance was just, we know how it works.
Right, right.
Um, sometimes it's confusing, I was hoping the, the, you know, from him, or then.
I think you want.
I, I, you know, how it worked, and, um, you know, it's that article, Charles.
I mean, I think it's great that alternates proceed the way that Mike did. He came in, was there for a year. He ran for it after that, and he had at least a year under the belt, instead of coming in just fresh off street, and not really understanding history or anything like that, certainly it's a better way to be a work participant, but. Um, the only other thing I have, is that I had talked to Carol, and asked her about, she's going to be.
We're going to, you know, going into non-public?
We shouldn't have to.
Yes, we should.
Oh.
I'll make a motion that we go into, um, they didn't have anything else, but.
Mountain, but it would be in public.
No, I mean, I'll make a motion to non-public.
I want.
For the review, uh, discussion of the personnel issue.
Carol, you're gonna have to end the meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, have the happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
Jade, thank you.
We have a second.
You're welcome, guys, bye-bye.
Second. On favor, well, we have to, to roll call. I'm not favoring that, and, and it's not because I don't want. It's because it was, the information was given to me in public. So, it's not, and. Huh?
I gave it to you privately.
In the hallway at the town hall.
That's not public.
No, I, I didn't say it publicly, I said publicly. It doesn't matter to me, I guess, I mean.
If it doesn't matter to you, you're not gonna go for it. I, I will make a motion now. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, get something to bring out. Well, hang on, hang on, one more time at a time, one more time at a time, so we have, we have motion to go on, or what, Joe selected it.
You were saying you're not public thing?
I was saying my non-public thing.
Now we're tempted to.
Uh, it, it, it still needs to be, it still needs to be discussed, so I, I don't.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna go on and off, I guess.
A public discussion?
I, well.
It could go either way, this could be personnel or.
Basically.
There's one, there's, there's one going to, if it wants to go into a non-public session, I'll vote yes. I guess, that's the only way we can discuss.
I was talking with.
Well, third, I remember. So, so we'll go into non, we'll go into non-public, under, I don't even have the.
Personal.
RSA nine one eight three three, row number two C. Matters which have discussed the public elect may have received affect reputations of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Unless a personal request opened meeting, except shall extend any application assistance tax, a basic waiver of fees, fines. This is the wrong one.
That's not, yeah, see, that's, that's a reputation of some.
Right.
This is a personnel issue.
That's the wrong RSA, that's wrong.
I don't know what the number is, but.
The one that told me to put.
All right, so, we're going on first, nine one eight three. Oh, and, and everyone, we'll call, you said yes, you said yes, I said. Yeah, that's, yeah, you said yes, so we're.